This training, I got the template for this training at the Association of Oregon County Planning Directors. Lane County had hired a trainer to train their planning commission. And there were, I think, five modules of it. And I kind of took it and tweaked it a little bit to make it tailored to Jackson County. But didn't, I tailored the pieces with our codified ordinance, but I didn't really tailor too much of the text. I think that while some of these are going to be self-evident and the planning commission is very proficient and does these things very well, I still kind of want to bring them up because it's also good for the public to kind of get an idea of the planning commission and their roles, their responsibilities, and kind of how they work. So, the first thing is, the enabling legis- Okay, so hold on just a second. I have, I don't have, hold on just a second, I don't have the right-
Kelly, I want to just say something while you're looking for that, too, and that for the public is that I think through my years of training in the bylaws, of working on the planning commission is that often the public misunderstands what our role is in some ways because we don't have as much latitude as some people might think we do. We really are here to interpret and enforce the regulations that are in place. Sometimes those are maybe no longer valid and no longer makes sense or, you know, and haven't had a chance to improve, change, or we haven't realized it until a hearing comes up. And we're stuck oftentimes just following that. And, you know, that the time for public, real public involvement sometimes is way earlier than when a project comes up before us. And that's in the development of these ordinances. And that's when we don't seem to get much public out to help us with it. And which is a shame, it's a part, I think it's a failing in our system. I think we all work at trying to get the public involved early and various ways of doing it. And with sometimes successful and sometimes limited success. So, it's just that, you know, that that's an important thing for the public to realize is that when we write the ordinance is when we can make those changes and make them make more sense and make them have common sense. And we do try to do that as much as possible, though I think that's what we have done through all of our revisions through all the years is try to simplify the system as much as we can, make it accessible to as many people as we can.
And that the interpretation meets the original intent.
Absolutely, right, yes.
Well, yes, and, I mean, remind, and the other piece of it is that we can make it as understandable as possible. But most of the law that we implement that is part of our codified ordinance and is in our comprehensive plan is really from the state. Counties, about, I would say 90, 85% of the legislation or the laws that we have in our land development ordinance come directly from the state. And that's unique for a county. Cities don't really have that. Cities have a lot more latitude in how they plan their, the urban environment. And we have a lot less latitude, a lot less local control over that because most of the resources that we have on lands in the unincorporated area are, you know, things that the county, that the state values and wants to protect. Agriculture, forest lands, aggregate, those kinds of things. So, we in fact have even less latitude than cities do in terms of our planning. And so, and it's challenging, you know, trying to write code from state law to make it understandable. It's a challenging endeavor. So, let's start. It's interesting because cities have enabling legislation for planning commissions. But counties don't. So, we kind of use the city's enabling legislation and it says a county or city may create a planning commission. It's not mandatory. I don't know of any community that doesn't have a planning commission, but it is not mandatory. It is mandatory to have a planning director. It can be, it could be, in many cases, in small cities, it's the city manager is also the planning director. In this case, in Jackson County, the Development Services Director, me, I'm the planning director as well. In terms of membership, and I'll go into this a little bit more when we talk about the bylaws, but the state statute in setting up the parameters for planning commissioners doesn't sort of want to have the planning commission stacked, the deck stacked with any one person who has any one profession. So, it says that no more than two voting members may be, may be in the same profession. So, you're not going to have a planning commission that's full of, that everyone is a lawyer or everyone is a doctor or everyone is a developer. I think state law is particularly sensitive to the development piece of that because as you know, what you do is you affect land use and development. And so, the law also reads that no more than two members can be principally, can be engaged principally in buying, selling, or developing real estate. Now, that's principal development. I say that because on our planning commission right now, we have two members that I would consider principally, involved principally in the development, buying or selling of real estate or property. And we have one that I think his principal occupation is retired. He's retired, I don't know that he would consider himself very retired. But he's retired and he does a little development, but that's not his principal occupation. A planning commissioner can be removed from the planning commission for, by the governing body, so the governing body is synonymous with the Board of Commissioners, for misconduct or non-performance. In addition, if a planning commissioner doesn't attend three meetings or is not excused from three consecutive meetings, that planning commissioner per our codified ordinance is considered to have resigned. Often, you know, the planning commission is a voluntary endeavor for you and everyone has a life outside of the planning commission. And so, as evidenced today, we have members that are absent, but they call and they get excused. The duties of the planning commission are outlined in the state statute. But generally, it's to make land use regulations to governing bodies. In this case, your role is to make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. So, today, your action, or your actions are typically to make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners who take final action creating those laws or making those decisions. Like I said, the planning commissioners are volunteers. However, that being said, you do exercise a lot of influence over what occurs in Jackson County from a land use perspective. There's no doubt about it. And the reason you have that influence is because the board, what I call, the board's expectation of the planning commission is to do the heavy lifting, is to read the record, is to read and balance these various things and to be aware of the law that govern land use and make decisions in that vein. So, you do, I mean, I think it's good to recognize, and I think you all do, recognize the influence that you have in the big picture for land use and development in Jackson County. So, then there are some things that they talk about. And like I said, this training was done in Lane County. And Lane County had some issues with public meetings and some other things. So, they wanted to hit these rather hard, some of these areas that I'm going to talk about. I think that our, this planning commission is one of the most respected planning commissions in the state for being thorough, being prepared, and being fair and being efficient. And those are all things that this training talks about. And the first one is to be fair. And I think that's very important. Many people who come before you, and you said this Chair Green, it's the very first time they'll ever, they've ever been in a county office. It may be the only time they're in a county office. And if they perceive, whether, and their perception is reality, that you are being, you're biased, then that is going to taint and affect, in a negative way, I think, their perception of Jackson County and their perception of the land use process. So, being fair, understanding the rules, treating everyone with respect. I've been, I was thinking about this this morning and I remember going and testifying myself as a citizen to a city council. And while I was testifying, two of the counselors were reading. They were just reading. And I thought, how, you know, I, it's not possible that they are reading and paying attention to what I'm saying. And they just kept reading. It wasn't like they were trying to refer to what I was saying in any document. And I thought, you know, I was so happy to think that our planning commission doesn't do that. Everyone, you're all attentive, listening, active listening to the public that comes in to testify. And as much as possible, given the sort of formal hearing that you hold, and it is a formal hearing with a formal process, I think you do tend to put people at ease by asking a question now and then because it is an intimidating process to come before you and testify. Being efficient, being efficient is being prepared. In this case, with this training, that's what they tend to. It's coming to the meetings and having read the material. And it's interesting, I was thinking about this this morning, too. When Commissioner Bennington was interviewed by the board, and when we have a vacancy, the board interviews for planning commission appointees. And during that process, everyone kind of asked, well, how, how much time does it take to, you know, be a member of the planning commission? And I said, well, you know, here are the meetings, but the meetings are a very small percentage of the actual activity that you conduct because that record that you had before you today was probably one of the smaller records. That was 200 pages. We've gone through regional problem solving where our record was about 2,000 pages. And the expectation by the public is that you are prepared, that you have read the documents, that you understand what they say. So, you can not only help yourself to make better decisions, but help them if they have questions. And it also is being efficient running the meeting. And I think we do a very good job here of being efficient running the meeting. We have a script that we follow or that the chair follows. And it's not, it's not because you're robots and we're giving you a script and you have to follow it. It's just because it's a complicated process, a hearings process, and to keep order. And those hearings have legal requirements that have to be met. Otherwise, we have procedural errors. I really try hard for us not to have those procedural errors. If we have, if we go up to Luba and Luba says, we erred in the decision. We erred in the decision. But I really don't want us to ever have an error in our procedure because there's really no excuse for that. We know what the procedure is and it's staff's job to help you follow that procedure. Knowing your role, and like I said, some of this you know, and I'm just kind of, kind of go through it kind of fast because I think you guys have a really good grasp of your role. But this is also for the public that's watching. So, the governing body has a role, and the governing body is the Board of Commissioners, and they're the ones who take your recommendations and act on them. They create, they adopt that, those land use regulations. Staff, staff administers those regulations for the general public. In terms of the planning commission, you know, we do things like providing your script, providing, which helps you keep track of what's going on in the meeting. Staff report, you should expect a thorough staff report. So, that's kind of what we do here. And preparing findings. And then, you know, you reviewing those findings to ensure that the findings reflect your positions. Sometimes you just approve the findings as written. Like Ken was saying earlier, the applicant wanted you to adopt their findings, but our findings were a little bit different because we agreed with some of the things and we didn't agree with some of the things. So, you, you know, you adopted the findings that are consistent with the staff report in that case. So, staff will prepare those as well, prepare the minutes. Staff also, you know, provides information at our planning counter, processes land use applications, produces notice and sends that out, takes comment, and makes tentative staff decisions that don't come before you. So, there's a difference, those type two decisions. So, a type one decision is kind of just an administrative decision. We make a decision, it's kind of a standards-driven decision and we kind of check the boxes. If that's appeal, it goes directly to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Then there's a type two. So, these are in kind of ranking in more, as they go up, it gets more difficult, it's a more difficult process. Type two is a discretionary land use decision where staff is making legal or policy judgment. Those are tentative staff decisions. Staff makes a decision, it's tentative, there's a 12-day appeal period. And if that's, if that decision is appealed, it goes to the, goes to our hearings officer for the county's final decision. So, the Jackson County hearings officer ends up in those cases where we have something appealed. That is the county's final decision. And that can be appealed on to the Land Use Board of Appeals and the Court of Appeals and those, those kinds of things. And then there are the decisions that come before you, the quasi-judicial decisions, which are basically an applicant wants to do something. They want his own change, they want to do a subdivision. There, there are a variety of other things. Those things come before you. And then legislative decisions, which are broad policy decisions. For example, regional problem solving, amending our comprehensive plan, that's a legislative decision. When we amended the site plan review chapter, when we amended the floodplain chapter of the land development organs. That's broad, those decisions affect countywide, are effective countywide. Those legislative decisions also come before you and you make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. So, I think I covered what, what your role is in that. I want to, with this training, it says, and I think this is good, if you have an issue with staff performance, staff performance, not me, so I'll be separate a little bit from staff in this situation. If you have an issue with staff performance, I would like you to come see me. If you think we can do better on our presentations, either the verbal ones or the PowerPoints that we put together, I would like you to come see me. I'm always available and open to constructive criticism and doing better because I think we can always do better. If you have an issue with my performance, then you would need to go see the county administrator. He is my supervisor and that would be the appropriate place. And I wanted to say that because in this training, it says the chair should talk to the county administrator. But what I would ask is if staff, if you think we can do better, I would like you to come see me. So, I can provide staff some direction on how to improve. I think one of, a critical responsibility of the planning commission is to educate the public. Every time the public comes into this auditorium or watches on television, they should gain some knowledge about the land use process. If nothing else, about the land use process. Some of our regulations are relatively, feel kind of esoteric sometimes and maybe a little bit difficult to understand. I think we try to do, I think we do a good job of trying to make those understandable to the general public. But I think educating the public is one of, is an important responsibility of yours. And as Chair Green was saying, you know, it's hard to do when people are relatively disengaged until some, they're disengaged until something is happening that is affecting them. And one of the ways I was thinking we provide an opportunity for people, and you see it, but you only see it in your record, is there are applications where we'll send out notice to neighbors when we receive the application. If we think the application is going to be contentious, we know it is, or it's, and it's at staff discretion. We typically do it, though, send out notice to neighbors and agencies to get their comments prior to us making our tentative staff decision for our recommendation to you. And that way, people can, in their own time, write down their thoughts or feelings about the application. And we do take that into account as much as we can, given the ordinance and the parameters in which we work. Be brave, I think this is actually a good one. You know, maybe you haven't, some of you, I think, have experienced this where you're sitting in an auditorium, you're sitting in this auditorium and you have an applicant who will be very happy with an approval and you have 30 people who will be very unhappy if that approval occurs. And I think making those decisions where you're making the decision based on the law can be difficult to look at those 30 people and say, you know, this is, they meet the criteria. And that's a difficult place to be. But that's what you signed up for, in essence, as well. That there are times when you will be faced with lots of opposition and angry people who are angry and passionate and scared and intimidated and, and I think in part, your job is to be patient with them as much as you can. Given that, you know, if we have a lot of people, people get so long to speak. But that's, I think you do a good job of recognizing how intimidating that can be to some people and trying to make them more comfortable. And participating. One of the reasons that you were appointed is the board thinks that you have something to add to our community and to Jackson County. And so, you know, this says, be sure to participate, which is not really a problem with this planning commission. I think you do a good job of participating. But like I said, I'm just going to go through this training the way it was written, even though I think that you, in some ways, I think personify a lot of these qualities and characteristics and behaviors in the way you conduct business here. But I guess it's, it's good to hear it because even me reading this, it reminded me how important your job is. You know, it's very, very important, very important to the county and the citizens and our citizens. The codified ordinance goes into, in detail, what the planning commission sort of structure is, what your job is. Now, granted, it was, most of this was written in, some of it was written in the 70s, the late 70s. Some of it was written in the late 80s. Didn't see much that was written even in the 90s. But in one sense, it's, these tenants are actually timeless. You know, there is, it, it, your job or the job of the planning commissioners really hasn't changed a lot in the last 30 years or so. What I thought I would do is just kind of go through the codified ordinance very quickly for you because it does have some good, it does have some good pieces in it. And interestingly enough, we actually had a situation not that long ago where we had a planning commission member who didn't want to vote, who wanted to abstain. And, and I think with the straw poll, the vote was going to be tied and what to do about that. And the bylaws and the codified ordinance actually speak a little bit to that. So, I wanted to speak to that because it's kind of good to know what happens. So, the membership of the planning commission, five members, for four-year terms. We don't have anyone who's filling a term where someone vacated. But in the event that we did, the board would appoint someone and their, and that person's term would run to the end of the term that the person had, who had vacated would be. But we don't have anyone in that situation right now. Again, the commissioners fill those vacancies and do that by taking applications, doing interviews, and then making a decision. And that decision is affirmed by the Board of Commissioners as a whole during a regular Wednesday meeting. Again, interestingly, the codified ordinance does speak to the same thing the statute does about the membership and the makeup. But it also says that residents shall be from various geographic areas of the county, which the state law doesn't require, but our codified ordinance does. So, when we look at a new member, what I do is do a little map showing where everyone lives that's on the planning commission and then identify where the applicants live. And try, and we, and the board tries to have representation from a variety of areas in the county. And actually, we do, pretty, we do actually, right now, have members who live in Phoenix, Ashland, Jacksonville or that area.
North Valley.
North Valley. But, and this also says that they need to be from the unincorporated areas. So, and that's important because the board has decided, and I think appropriately so, that, you know, for unincorporated Jackson County, the majority of members on the planning commission should be from the unincorporated areas. I had forgotten about this piece, that there's a six-month probationary period. I think we're all on a permanent probationary period, frankly. But during that period, the Board of Commissioners can remove a planning commissioner. After that, they can be, a planning commissioner can be removed for misconduct or non-performance or non-attendance, basically. You serve without compensation. You do get an occasional lunch and I'm glad we can provide that. But there is no compensation. And I think that speaks to the civic-mindedness of the planning commission that, you know, you're not, I often say to you, say to some of you, you know, you did so good, you're doing so good, you should double your pay. But you serve without compensation. In terms of your functions, like I said, doing the heavy lifting, assisting the board in formulating policies, balancing, trying to balance as best you can, public, the public with, public desires with the law in light of these various applications and legislation. Conflicts of interest, you know, I'm not going to go too much into conflicts of interest. It's actually something that we could spend a lot of time on. And if we were, if the planning commission wanted to do that, I would want to have county council here. Suffice it to say, if you or a family member, and that definition of family member has, I think, gotten more broad since this was written in 1970, 1980, 1979. But basically, you need to disclose if you or a family member would have a direct or direct or substantial financial interest in the, in the application. And you need to disclose that and then the planning commission needs to decide what to do about that. Often, people recuse themselves or believe that they can make a decision regardless of financial interest. But that's dealt with on like a case-by-case basis. Your authority and responsibilities, again, dealing with legislative and quasi-judicial amendments to the comp plan or the land development ordinance. And this is, this is a timely one. Comprehensive plans of incorporated communities to determine consistencies with the county comp plan. So, for, and I'll give you an example of that. I think in the next, well, less than, significantly less than a year, you're going to be seeing an urban growth boundary expansion. And we have to ensure that our comprehensive plan for that urban growth boundary expansion is consistent with the cities. So, this, the county can't, so for example, if a city comes forward and says, we want to expand into this urban reserve with our urban growth boundary. And the county says, huh, well, you know, we only want you to take half that. And these are the reasons why. The city can't adopt a comp plan that takes it all and we adopt a comp plan that takes, that allows for half. They have to be consistent, we have to come to an agreement. And actually, when I say we have to come to an agreement, I guess it's not necessarily true because the county is sort of the ultimate gatekeeper in that. And as, there's an example, the city of Medford was looking at doing an urban reserve out in the Griffin Creek area. And the county denied that, basically. And so, they couldn't move forward because the county is sort of the last say before it goes on to the Land Conservation and Development Commission. There is an annual work program for the planning commission and I am going to work on that annual work program. After regional problem solving, we really didn't need an annual work program because we were kind of just doing applications. And then we got this Southern Oregon Regional Pilot Program grant and started that process. And so, we've had these things that are almost like, they're almost a fait accompli. We have to do them. They're moving forward, we have to do them. But I think it, I think it's timely for the planning commission to sit down with the Board of Commissioners and look at a work program, and talk a little bit about expectations of maybe the Southern Oregon Regional Pilot Program. And so, look for that. Stay tuned for that, 'cause that's coming. Let's see. So, in terms of being informed and having an understanding, we have, Oregon land use is very complex, and as it, as years go by, it gets more complex. It really doesn't get any less complex, I've come to realize. Even trying to make it less complex is often making it more complex. And so, the planning commission's responsibility is to understand basic land use practices and principles. And if you don't understand them all right away, that's fine, because you will become accustomed to them, accustomed to them as time goes by, because you go through applications with various criterion, staff reports, those kinds of things, and become more accustomed. It's a steep learning curve, but we can help with that, too. And I would say that anytime you have a question about a staff report, or about a recommendation, or about something in the record that you've read, please feel free to communicate with the planner, or to communicate with me. We're all, as staff, our job is to provide you information. And so if there's something lacking, or you don't understand something, please absolutely come and see us. You know, your job is to make planning decisions based on the law, sound planning practice, and public, and a consideration of public opinion. Ultimately, we want you to make decisions that are defensible, because decisions that aren't defensible cost, end up usually costing the county and the taxpayers a lot of money. But I think we do a good job of writing pretty solid findings, and those help make our decisions defensible. But know that if you had the desire to make a recommendation that completely violated state law, or our local code, you're making that as a recommendation to the board, so it's not a final decision. But we, at that point, would encourage the board to look at the law, because when it's appealed, and we have lots of appeals in Jackson County, lots and lots of them, compared to other counties, I'm astonished when I talk to other counties, who maybe have one appeal a year. And right now, I think, at the Land Use Board of Appeals, we probably have three. And that's three for the last, maybe, three months. So, in our heyday, when development was really clipping along in two thousand four, two thousand five, we had fifty-eight Luba appeals. Because we have a, we have a county that is, has a lot of differing opinions. People have a lot of differing opinions here. And it's relatively inexpensive to appeal a decision. It's two hundred and fifty dollars. So, we do have a lot of appeals, but our goal is to make defensible findings and to be upheld. And I'll say it for two reasons. One, when I came down to the Development Services Department, we were going to Luba a lot, and we were being remanded a lot. Meaning, Luba was disagreeing with the county's decisions and sending them back and saying, you need to, you need to take another look. And my philosophy has been, while we want to be, we, our code is no more restrictive than state law, that's the board's direction, that we interpret the code in as flexible a manner as we can, that we do make legally defensible decisions, and that Luba upholds our decisions more. Because if we are seen as sort of the rogue, no pun intended, then our applications are given a lot more scrutiny, and they're, we never get the benefit of the doubt. You know, we weren't getting the benefit of the doubt. I think our decisions are, while we're still following that direction from the board, no more restrictive than state law, and looking at it as being as flexible as we can, I think we're finding that our decisions are upheld at Luba. Luba is giving our local jurisdiction, our local jurisdiction, they are saying, yes, we support your decisions, you have good findings, we can see how it's tied to the code. And so we're winning a lot more, which is a good thing, I think, for us, for Jackson County in general. Let's see. There's a section in the codified ordinance that talks about what happens if the planning director and the planning commission disagree. I will tell you, you know, I've been the planning director for about four years, I think, now. Not really had an occasion where the planning director and the planning commission disagree. But there is a provision that says, if we do disagree, that we need to try to work that disagreement out, and, but if we can't, both bodies or both parties, I guess, send a recommendation to the board. Like I said, I really have not seen that happen. I'm glad they have a provision for it in here, in case it ever did, but I, I think that's probably not very likely. And then there's a section on how the process is administered, meaning how you go through kind of your hearings process, which includes, you know, developing findings, taking public comment, having study sessions, which this is. Talks about hearings and the rules of procedure. And that's primarily the gist of the codified ordinance as it relates to the planning commission. Before we go into the bylaws, 'cause the bylaws are next, and they're actually pretty, pretty short, but, but I think really meaningful, and they were updated in two thousand and one. Are there any questions about my presentation so far?
Do you have a question?
Comments? Okay, okay. I think with regional problem solving, even, we had meetings every two weeks. But we had them every two weeks. We didn't have them twice a month. We had them every two weeks, and it just kinda flowed from there.
We did have that agricultural forum, that was at a different one time.
That's right. And that was a special meeting.
That was a special meeting, yeah.
And so, what this says is that if a special meeting, the chair may call a special meeting, and that needs to be approved by three or more members of the planning commission. Election of officers, like I said, chair, vice chair, and secretary. The tenure of officers, the chair and vice chair and secretary serve for one year. They can serve for numerous years if they're elected, as is the case with Chair Green. Let's see. Authorization, that's very similar to what's in the codified ordinance, the five members that are appointed by the board. A quorum, this is important. This is important, because we often have people who can't make our meeting, for whatever reason, because their other life is taking a priority. So a quorum is a majority of the appointed, of the total appointed membership. That's important when we have, especially when we have a vacancy. So that actually came up when we had this last vacancy, that Commissioner Bennington filled, which is, do we have a quorum if we, if we have, you know, just three members, and we only have four members that are, you know, appointed? And the answer is yes, 'cause it's based on, it's based on the number of appointed members, but it has to be three or more. So we always have to have three or more.
I think one of the things that came up when this, this, when we were, the meeting in January, when we were worried about quorum because of having a member gone, was, was the voting, too. And this is, it's, you know, I think, I, we reviewed it with staff at that time, because to make sure that, that the exercise of authorities by a majority of those voting, which means that there could be a, an abstain or something like that, and still move forward with a pro, with a, so a vote is a vote, whether, whether it's a no, a yes, or an abstain because of a, of a conflict of interest or precedence. Exactly.
Right. And that, like I said, that is important, because often we have, often we have a member absent, or we have a situation in that case, where we might have a member who wasn't at the meeting where the public testimony was taken, hasn't listened to the tape, or watched the video, doesn't, does wanna abstain from a vote. And so that, you're right, that is really, we have those two kind of situations to deal with in terms of voting. In the absence of a quorum, which we have had on occasion, where we've had something come up at the last minute from, with a planning commissioner, and we, and it means we don't have a quorum, or we learn of an absence after we've sent the notice out. That happens, too.
Well, I want to mention one thing about that, too, for private members, that we, sometimes we have to come in and actually vote on a, all we have to do is come and continue a hearing, but we have to do it legally, and we have to meet to do that. So, you'll be called upon sometimes to do that.
Right. The only thing, if a quorum is not present, the only thing that the chair can do is determine, is state the next meeting's date and time. So you're continuing it to a date and time certain. But that's the only thing that can be done. The, it goes on to state the order of business, which you all know, because we basically go through this every, it's basically the agenda. You know, there's roll call, there are minutes, the meeting call to order, roll call, and minutes, and then it goes into our regular meeting. And so all that is, is how the meeting functions. Now, like I said, the planning commission has the ability to change this. So if, if, as we're going through this, and maybe this is with, you know, the full, I was hoping everyone from the planning commission would be here today, but if the planning commission decides they wanna change something about the order in which we do things, granted, there are some statutory requirements that we have to go through in terms of our procedure, but things that aren't statutory, statutorily required, you can change. And if there are changes, then the planning commission can talk about that. In the way we do business, or the kind of, the makeup of the agenda and the flow of the agenda. Let's see. Okay. So the conduct of meetings, talks about public hearings, conducted, you know, based on rules established by the planning commission, and the rules that are, that we have that are statutorily in place.
I wanted to talk a little bit about this one section, if you could. I know this is not a part of the training, but it's something that, it's an issue that's come up, and that we might, may wanna talk about and discuss. And that is about, you know, one of the requirements is an opportunity for members of the public to prevent, to, you know, raise concerns, and to speak, basically. But we've had a problem, a little bit of an issue with, with giving time away on this. When I started reading this section, I was a little bit confused, because we have, five point one is public hearings, five point two is study sessions, but in this section, we also talk about opportunities for members to present information. I'd read this as meaning that's part of the public hearing, as well as the study session. But because of the way it's kind of written, it kind of, it might, could be confused to be that that's only for a study session. Do you get, do you see what I mean?
Right, I think that...
Participation should be limited by the chair, or rescheduled to another meeting.
Right. I think that five point one, it really is deferring the public hearing process to the requirements of state law. And the statute sets out the process for the requirements of the hearing, and they're almost verbatim to your admonishment. So the admonishment, that long thing that you read, that long text that you read before a public hearing, identifying, you know, the applicant, you know, we're gonna hear from the staff, then we're gonna hear from the applicant, then we'll hear from those that are opposed, and then we'll hear from those four, and then the applicant will be given a chance for rebuttal, and then, and then we'll close the public. All of that, that's really part of state law. So I think what five point one is doing is really sort of referring to that, even though it doesn't cite the ORS, and in a way, I'm glad it doesn't, because of those change all the time.
Yes, right.
I think in five point two, what it's really saying is, you can alter if, for example, for example, if you had two items on your agenda that were, let's say, the two items, you had two public hearings. You could decide, we have set the agenda that, agenda item, the first one is X, and the second one is Y. And you could say, as chair, I want to move Y up to first position and hear that first. You could do that. Now, also, in this section, it talks about the public participation at a study, or a study session, and it says it may be allowed. So if you have a public hearing, you are required to hear from the public. If you have a study session, you are not required to hear from the public. You can decide to, or you can decide not to. The Board of Commissioners holds a study session on Tuesdays, and sometimes they allow the public to speak, and sometimes they don't. And the planning commission has that purview to make that decision. And I think that's, it is a little bit confusing, because I don't think, because it doesn't state the statute, the statutory reference in five point one, it almost doesn't speak as fully as it could to what the public hearing process is, and that it is mandatory for a public hearing. But I think that's because they were just referring to the statute.
The thing that I'm more concerned about is that we do, at times, limit the amount of time that the public can speak. And I don't know if the statute allows that, or if it's allowed through our bylaws.
The statute simply says that the public has a right to provide testimony. It doesn't say that it has to be ten minutes, it doesn't say that you have to give them time to complete all their thoughts, it doesn't, it doesn't give any parameters to that. It just basically says you have to allow them time. You know, if you said, I'm gonna allow everyone thirty seconds, I think you would, you know, I think that's probably challengeable, and maybe successfully challengeable. But if you're giving people five minutes or three minutes, I think that's fairly standard, frankly.
And testimony is allowed by oral or written testimony, so they can corroborate their oral testimony with, in writing.
Yes. And we often have that. People come up and wanna speak, they, or they wanna speak that's different from the text that they have in front of them, and they wanna provide that into the record, or they're reading from their text, and they put it into the record. And citizens can do either of those things.
But the statute doesn't really specifically talk about limitations. It talks about it here, but I think that's really related to, to study sessions. So I'm wondering if we need to do something in the bylaws that allows us to clarify when we do that. I'm, you know, I know it is pretty much standard in every hearing that I've almost ever been to, that when there's a contentious issue within a lot of people speaking, that they do limit it. But I'm, I'm wondering where that authority comes from, and how we work within that. Because we've had this issue of giving somebody's time to someone else, and, and that could, could result in a real, you know, problem. If there's a really, really contentious thing, we could end up having somebody bring in, you know, a hundred people and give them their time.
I think what we've done, though, is, again, that's an authority of the chair to run a session.
To run a session.
And then we oftentimes extend the hearing dates.
Yes. And that, and that's certainly in the study session section of it, and we do do that, right. But do we, is it something that is worth clarifying in our, or is it that the proper place to do it? Or do we need to? Does anybody even feel we need to? Are, you know, are we, you know, I think we're legally on good grounds when we do what we do. But is it something that is appropriate to clarify in the, in the bylaws? I know Dick has brought that up, when, he's not here today, but he's brought that up, you know, being our, our attorney on the, on the commission. He's got, you know, a real good understanding sometimes of language and how it's written. So, I just bring that up now to just, you know, I know this is a study session to talk about what we have, but, you know, if what we have isn't clear...
Well, I think it lends itself to a reasonableness perception on the basis of what the chair determines to be an appropriate conduct of the session. In order that everybody has an opportunity to make a case.
Right.
At least, in a, even if it's a limited form, but it allows everybody the opportunity, because there are some time constraints on conducting that.
To conduct a meeting. To conduct a meeting, that's, that, yeah, so that everybody can be there to hear it. I mean, people are here, people come to a meeting, and they have an expectation of having to be here, but they have other lives, and so we need to make sure that people do have that opportunity.
Generally, what we do, the chair offers the commission the opportunity to determine if we want to extend additional time to any particular testimony.
Right.
And oftentimes we do, in fact, very rarely.
Very rarely do we limit, yeah.
And we're pretty flexible on even the limitations that we set at the beginning of every meeting or session, that we'll authorize three minutes or recommend three minutes or five minutes, but oftentimes they go well over that.
Right. Yeah, I think that's something that we've always kind of done as a commission to make sure.
Right.
That, I, I, I know it's important to me and to, and to everyone else, I think, to be, allow people to be heard, if they're giving us information that's relevant.
Right.
You know, sometimes we'll cut people off if they're getting off topic, but that's more, that's, most of the time, that's the only time we take, we cut people off unless we have real, real tight limitations. I just want, just bringing this up because, is it something that we need to look at?
I mean, we could put in some language, because, like I said, this is a little bit less formal than the codified ordinance. You could put in some language that, you know, something like depending on the number of people testifying, the planning commission, the planning commission chair with, I guess, concurrence from the planning commission has the ability to, to put a time, a time limit on each person's testimony. You know, that would give, that, you would all acknowledge that you had that authority to do that in this, but, but you do have that authority, and I guess what I, I would probably recommend not doing that, because in one sense, it kind of looks like you're, someone could read that and think that you're looking to restrict-
Looking for ways to restrict, and that's not what we're trying to, it's exactly the opposite of that, right.
Absolutely, so I think that it's, I think with your knowledge, that you can do that, that people have to have the ability to provide public testimony at a public hearing, that depending on the size of the crowd, depending on your timeline, depending on a variety of factors, you may choose to allow public testimony to only last three minutes or only last five minutes, and then you're right, you give people the option, or you make the decision if people can go longer. I think you also make a decision if people can go, can give someone their time. I am going to look into that to see if the statute even speaks to that. I don't know if it does, I don't think it does. I think that's kind of a, a thing people kind of, to, to, to allow people more time to speak have kind of come up with this process. I'm not sure if it's in the statute or not, but I'll look at that, because I think you should know that too. Because you, because you want to know if you have to accept it and allow it.
Right.
And to what degree you have to do that.
And to what degree, right.
Because my guess is the statute simply says you have to give everyone a right to speak. I don't think it says you have to give someone the right, you, you have to allow someone who doesn't want to speak their time for someone else. But I'll look at that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, for the public, that we, if we limit time, we almost always do know how many people are, are wanting to speak, because we have a sign up. And you, you, we have a record, we have a sign up sheet that everyone signs that wants to speak at a hearing, and so I have that in front of me, or the chairman does, and so we know how many people really are out there that want to speak. Sometimes there's a huge audience, but some are just there to hear, and not as many to speak, and so, yeah.
And it'll voice filibuster and that-
Right, yeah.
Certain techniques that anyone may want to try to employ to kind of clog the process of.
Exactly.
And there are, you know, that, I, I have seen that done, where, where the planning commission's time has been limited. For example, two members had to leave at 10:00 or 10:30, and there has been a public hearing, and, and there has been a desire to have that public hearing continued, and it's been done via more people speaking than probably would have spoken. But I think you are very generous. First of all, you follow the law. You provide an opportunity for public testimony, for everyone who comes to provide testimony. But I think it's reasonable to, to respect your time and to respect the time of the people who come. Lots of people who come look at our agenda, and you'll notice in our agenda, today's agenda, it says, "Agree 1:00 P.M." We won't go till 1:00 P.M. There's a little asterisk, and it says, "The planning commission for break, you know, may break around noon," and, and it says, "All times are approximate." People don't read the "all times are approximate," so we have people who come in and say, you know, "I took an hour off work," or "I took two hours off work, and you were supposed to go till 11:00 o'clock, why are you almost done?" Or "Why is the public hearing now closed?" Because it said 11:00, and I thought it was, the public hearing was going to go until 11:00.
Right.
So, you know, that's, so you take that into account too, that people who come to the meeting want to speak, and maybe they need to leave, and so you want to, you want them to see a decision or a recommendation.
Right.
And so I think that this provides you all of that latitude that you exercise, and I think it's probably adequate.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think I want to reiterate that, that our goal here is to make sure we allow everyone who wants to be heard to be heard, and to give them an opportunity to give us testimony through writing and not, and if we get a lot of written testimony at a hearing, we, most of the time, will continue the hearing so that we can review that stuff, because this planning commission does read the material, and they do review it, and you, all you have to do is come to one of our hearings and hear the questions and the way that people speak about it to know that that's what happens. So, you know, I, you know, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're just trying to make sure we have the best way to serve the public that comes to our meetings, and I think that the, the timing is one of the issues we've tried to do. We didn't used to have a timed agenda, and we've done that so that people can know approximately when they can come, and when they don't have, don't have to be here, so that they don't have to spend four or five or six hours sometimes, that these go to two or, we've gone to two or three in the afternoon many, many times, and, and that's real inconvenience for people who are working and to have other opportunities, so. That's the reason oftentimes for limiting it, is to make sure everybody can be heard in a timely manner, so.
And it does speak directly to defensible recommendation making to the board.
It does that too, that's right. Yeah. Okay, well, thank you for allowing me to talk about that a little bit.
Oh, no, that's what a study session is for.
You know, I thought this was a good time to talk about, about this issue that's come up recently, and how, and make sure that we're handling it properly and, and giving every opportunity we can, so.
Right. In terms of voting, I think this is interesting as well. So a roll call vote is taken on all formal motions, which you do, but it goes on to say that all members shall vote on all motions which are properly made and seconded, except when excused by the chair, when a member disqualifies himself due to an absence at a meeting where the issue came before the planning commission and was considered, or when a member disqualifies himself due to a conflict of interest. In the case of a tie vote, the motion will be deemed to have failed. If a motion to deny a proposed action fails because of a tie vote, the proposed application shall also be considered not approved but denied. So if you come to a tie and you can't move off of that tie, then it's considered a denial or a recommendation for denial. That's, and, you know, and that information, just so you know, when staff goes to the Board of Commissioners, we inform the board of, well, they have it in the record, and we also inform them of the planning commission's vote. So in the case of a tie vote, we would let the, we would let the board know that this was a tie vote, and this is, and this was the result of that.
You know, I might want to add that it's quite important when there is a vacancy to get it refilled as quickly as possible, because when there are only four, that can occur more often than otherwise.
Right.
So I know in the past, we have gone for an extended period with only four on, and that may occur again here before too long, so, for a very positive reason, I might add. But it's important, I think, that, that we have those vacancies filled as quickly as possible with the competent individual.
Right, and I think that we had a situation where we had a member of the planning commission that did not want to vote. For whatever reason that was, they had been at the meetings, they had heard the information, and they didn't want to vote. And I will tell you, and I said this at that meeting, you have been appointed to vote. I mean, that's what you've been appointed to do. If you have to abstain because you haven't been here, and you don't know the particulars and you don't feel comfortable voting, then don't vote, absolutely. If you have not been at a meeting and you've watched, because, you know, we videotape all these meetings, and, you know, you can watch it just like being there, and you watch that, and you feel like you're prepared, or you don't watch it, and you read the record and feel like you're prepared, you can come vote. It's up to you whether you think you're prepared enough to vote. But if you come to the meetings and you hear testimony and you participate, your job is actually to vote. You know, I can't make you vote, no one can, but I would strongly encourage you to vote, because that's what you're appointed for. There's no voting by proxy, just so you know. We've really not ever had that even asked, but, but there, there is not any voting by proxy. And then the bylaws go into, you know, the officers, staff and committees. It does allow the chair to appoint subcommittees, basically, and the chair can be an ex officio member of all committees. The committees need to consist of two members, one of whom may be the chair. The first member appointed to a committee, if the chair doesn't want to be the chair of that committee, would be the chair. And so that's, we don't really have that very often, but in, on occasion, we might need to have a subcommittee to look into an issue that the planning commission wants, and you do have that ability. And I think, oh, unexcused absence, again, this isn't in the codified ordinance, but I did state it when we were kind of going through how one could basically be dismissed from the planning commission, and if a member is not excused from three consecutive regular or special meetings, they shall be considered to have resigned. We don't really have a problem with that about excused absences, the planning commission's very good about, the planning commission members are very good about conveying information to us. When we call to ask if there's going to be a quorum, you respond posthaste, so thank you for that. If you, a planning commissioner could take a leave of absence, interestingly enough, if something came up in your life and you needed to take a month, for example, the planning commission would review that, and the Board of Commissioners would need to approve it. I think, and like I said, again, the bylaws can be amended by a majority of the planning commission. So it's, so the bylaws are certainly more of a, what I would consider a, the codified ordinance is a living document, don't get me wrong, but the, the bylaws are really yours in a more intimate way and can be changed.
I would just like to interject that those of us that are on the commission, or who may become commission members, should always try to allocate their time to the full extent on the day that we meet, and not limit the opportunity for public comment and testimony and, and extend hearings because of our own issues that we, naturally, that sometimes are absolutely unavoidable, unavoidable, but I think it's important that the commission members try to make their time available for as long as necessary on, on our given meeting dates so that we can get through issues, because time is money for applicants. And for the county as well, there's additional cost to review issues that maybe could be resolved in a more timely fashion, so I think it's something that we all have to be mindful of, is to offer our time as volunteers as extensively as possible, because that's what we committed to do.
Joe, I think that's a really good point, that, that is part of the commitment that you make when you've come on to this commission, is that it does require a lot of time.
Absolutely.
And a lot, sometimes it takes a tremendous amount of time. Lately, we've not had as much, but during, for instance, RPS, there was a tremendous amount of time-
Absolutely.
-given to that. And, and so you're absolutely correct, because we are here serving the public, and part of that public is the applicant, and for us to have to have them continue hearings for a month at a time, sometimes just because we haven't allocated the time-
Right.
-is important, so, you know, it's a good point. I wanted to add one other thing, and I don't, I don't know if you hit it, I can't remember now if he did, and that's in, about minority report.
Oh.
We do on things where, where we make just a recommendation to the board, there is the opportunity always to do a minority report, if we, if, if one or more members disagrees with the, with the findings that we've, that have been done. And we have done that occasionally in the past, very rarely, but we have occasionally, so.
Right, and that is provided into the record that goes to the Board of Commissioners with the planning commission's recommendation as well.
In case of, what is RPS, where we had, I think, two minority reports.
We had two minority reports.
And had different views.
Different views from both those minority reports.
Which is perfectly acceptable.
Yeah, and the, and that those are, for your information, for everybody else, is that those are a part of, like, like you said, they are, become a part of the record, and the board looks at those.
Right.
They have an obligation to look at those and, and have a weight on those.
Right.
I, I think that speaks to where we have the, you know, the variety of views and opinions on this board, and that's why we do that with our, with the membership, the way we distribute and, and point members.
Well, and even-
Make sure we have that.
Exactly, it goes back to the minutes. We don't just cursory, procedurally agree to the minutes. There are often times where we're looking at adjectives to make sure that the context meets what the discussion was.
Well, yeah.
So that, as it's a part of the record, that, that the minutes are actually accurate, and we just don't arbitrarily say, yeah, I agree to last meeting's minute, so it all works together.
Accuracy in language is extremely important.
Absolutely, it's critical.
Extremely important, yes.
In land use in particular, I mean, in light in particular, but land use-
Yes, it is, really it is, yeah.
Very much.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
So I have a couple of, I think I have three or four more components to this training that range from, you know, more in depth of looking at the statute with regard to farmland and forest land. It's all, it's not getting down into the weeds fully, these trainings, but I think they open up a good dialogue, and the planning commission hasn't really, you know, we've been pretty focused, the planning commission's been pretty focused on applications, and, and I think it's a good opportunity to have some dialogue about things that, you know, you've brought up here and there with these instances, for example, you know, time and giving people time, and trying to have those dialogues. When you can have them in a relaxed setting as opposed to a charged setting where you have, you know, 30 people in the audience and you're trying to make that decision, or trying to figure out if you can make that decision during that meeting, I think these are good, but it's, it's totally up to you. I will continue, because I think I have three or four more, if you'd like.
I, I think it's a really good idea, because, you know, in the past, we, when we had more staff, we had a more, more effort going on, we were doing a little more review of our ordinances to see what we could do to make sure that they meet the conditions in Jackson County, and to do what we could do with them, with, you know, chained with revisions to our comp plan and some things like that, and those efforts have all been stalled because of lots of issues, but, you know, it's some, it is part of our charge to look at those.
Right.
And it's something that, you know, that, you know, that we can always look at further, and a, and a further understanding of it, we all gain a more, better understanding of it from, from hearing about the basics sometimes. We, we sometimes forget how, how it works.
And somehow, we have to get a review of the comp plan back on track.
We do need to.
Because it is well outdated.
It's really, really outdated in many sections.
And it is.
It is not serving us well.
No.
Well, I, I don't know, I don't know if I would agree with it not serving us well. I think it's still, because the comp plan is written as broadly as it is, I think it has served us fairly well. I think our LDO, our Land Development Ordinance, is more keeping up with the times, definitely. But you're right, I think the comp plan, you know, we, we developed a new element to the comp plan, that's regional problem solving.
Right.
But I think that- But I think that dialogue about where, about our work program is, is a timely dialogue. And I know that we don't have, at least what Laura was saying, is we don't have a lot of items in March. But I think we can continue with this training and then look at the work program.
Yep. Yep.
So, so I will bring.
I'm not saying it doesn't serve us well, as that it could serve us much better with revisions.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
That, that looks at the new vision of where this county is going, and so that we can really start, or try and lead it forward in some ways with land use. It can, that can have, can have a tremendous effect on the county.
And it's a direct reflection of the home charter rule that we operate under also. So there's a real connection there. And if we're not up to date on the comprehensive plan, we're out of touch.
Yep. It is what directs us.
No, and I agree. I mean, in, in some ways, well, it does provide the direction of the Land Development Ordinance.
Yes.
Other than state law changing or court cases occurring or those kinds of things. And I think that, you know, looking at things like the agricultural element and looking at energy and economy and.
And recreation.
And recreation. I mean, because, you know, you're right. 20 years, it's not, I keep thinking the 80s was 20 years ago, but it's not.
I keep trying to do that, too.
Yeah. It's been 2080s. It wasn't so long ago. Oh, that music, I like it. But it was quite a while ago now. So.
Yeah, you think about recreation. We've got this, you know, this idea for this kayak course. Well, our comprehensive plan doesn't necessarily promote that kind of an activity. It, it can in some ways, but it could, you know, we could certainly be more specific to, you know, whether or not it is, it is valid, whether, you know, and it's something we wanted to do, you know. It could be a big boon to the county.
Right. And there are a lot of people who are suspect of planning in general, so.
Right.
Being as.
If we're out of date, that gives them more reason to be suspect of us. That's correct. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. Do we have any other items we need to talk about from the Board or from planning commissioners? Do any of the planning commissioners have anything that they'd like to speak to us about on this?
I have one thing.
Okay, go ahead.
But Joel, you want to go first?
Yeah, I'll go first. I just wanted to point out that there was an article in today's paper regarding land use situation with Del Rio Vineyards. And it was pointed out in there, or reported in there, that the planning commission had made a decision for a certain allowance. But I just wanted to say that it was actually the planning department, not the commission, that was involved in that, just for the record.
Right. Anytime you see that the hearings officer is going to hear something, the Jackson County hearings officer is going to hear it, that would not have come before the planning commission.
Right.
The appeal of a plant, well, the appeal of any planning commission decision is to the Board of Commissioners.
Right. And I don't think there was any intent.
It just was an error.
It was just an error on their part, right.
Right.
I wanted to just let you know about one of the items that we're getting a lot of calls on right now, and that is medical marijuana facilities. And I went, I was part of the rulemaking, a subcommittee of the rulemaking committee for the bill 3460 that approved the ability for the Oregon Health Authority to register medical marijuana facilities. There, and in that bill, and then in the rule, it says that they can't, they may be located on lands that are zoned commercial, mixed use, industrial, or agriculture. In Jackson County, well, so that bill passed, and there were rules created for the Oregon Health Authority to register these facilities. They'll start taking applications on March 3rd. But that's only for OHA's registration. It's not for local communities' land use process. I want to make that very, very clear. And in the application, it does say, and in their website, it does say something to the effect of, this is a registration from the Oregon Health Authority, you know, please see your, this is not a local land use decision. So where, in the unincorporated areas, where they may be located is unclear. I know that they can't be located on agricultural land, because the only way they could be located there is if they were a commercial use in conjunction with farm use. And the growing of medical marijuana is not a farm use, because a farm use is making a, is making a profit in money. That's the endeavor is to make a profit in money. And with medical marijuana, even with the dispensaries, they are allowed to cover their cost, but it doesn't say anything about making a profit. So in terms of the other zones, we have a category in our code. As you know, our Land Development Ordinance is an exclusive ordinance, meaning that the things that are identified in our use table are things you can do. If it's not identified in our use table, you can't do it unless you go through a process to kind of do a like use kind of process, an enlisted use. Say, well, I want to do this, and it's really similar to this. And then staff makes that determination via a type two decision that's noticed. And, you know, of course, we're using discretion. So we have a category in our code for, on commercial land that is called drugstore. I think in the modern vernacular, that would be called a pharmacy. You're going to get over the counter pharmaceuticals. So what I have been telling people is that if you want to apply to Jackson County for a medical marijuana facility, you would apply, it would only be allowed in a commercial zone. Now, the rules have a lot more restriction. They, they can't be more than 1,000 or less than 1,000 feet from one another. They can't be less than 1,000 feet from a school. There are some other restrictions. But the Oregon Health Authority is dealing with those restrictions. And they, an applicant would need to show that a medical marijuana facility is basically a pharmacy. And staff would make that decision via a type two application that, if appealed, would go to the hearings officer. And I just wanted to let you know that, because that's a kind of a hot topic right now in the planning department. And there's also a bill, Senate Bill 1531, that is, the last I heard, it was moving, it had been passed in the House, or moved on from the House Judiciary Committee, that would allow local jurisdictions to sort of opt out of allow, of approving medical marijuana dispensaries, much like is done in Colorado and Washington. I don't know where that bill is going to go.
Because of the federal law relationship?
It doesn't specify that in the bill. However, the, you know, for example, the city of Medford, that's the nexus that they've made. They've, with their business license, they say will not give a business license to anyone who doesn't comply with fed, local, state, or federal law. You know, Jackson County doesn't have a business license. So it's regulated through land use. But like I said, I wanted to let you know that that it would be a type two decision that would be noticed to the neighbors as well. I've already gotten some calls from neighbors who have heard that there might be a medical marijuana facility going into a site that they're adjacent to or across the street from, and they're, they've been concerned. And I've explained the process to them. So I'm explaining the process to you that I've been explaining to the last, actually, my voicemail yesterday, I got four calls. Before that, I had received numerous other calls of people interested in doing that. It was interesting, when I went to the Association of Oregon County Planning Directors meeting on Friday, we were talking about, because I have been the one following this and, and providing that group information, and was asking, you know, how many calls have people been getting? And most of the planning directors said zero or one, two.
They were telling you, count it.
So we're getting, I have a few more calls than that. So I, like I said, I just wanted to let you know that that, that that's out there. And that, that's the process, both for you to know and maybe the listening public to know that that's.
Right. So for a type two, they will receive a notice of decision?
They would receive a notice of tentative staff decision, yes.
And so anyone who receives that notice needs to take a heads up, because there's a time and a method of appealing that if they want to do that.
Yes.
It's timely, and it is also, you have to be relevant to our procedures.
Right. It's a 12-day appeal period, which is noted on that notice. And it's a $250 appeal fee. Like I said, that goes to the Jackson County hearings officer.
So can I add a question? So just based on what you just said, what I heard you say is, you have, we have something going on that is, that has already increased dramatically in its frequency of occurrence, and is likely to increase more so. So do you, do you see a need to take some sort of action at the county administrative level in response to this? Or do you think things are, think things are handleable just the way they are right now?
I think we have a process to deal with them right now. I think that many jurisdictions are waiting to see what happens with Senate Bill 1531, to see if they're allowed to be, the state allows prohibition of them. But I think that our process is, it's applicable, you know? It's what anyone would do who had a use that didn't fit. And no one has a use in their code that is medical marijuana facility. I haven't heard anyone, city or county, that has that use.
Not even anyone.
No, probably not. And so everyone is looking at it as, as something akin to something else that's in their code.
Let me interrupt just briefly because I know that there were a couple of boutique alcohol manufacturers that were operating Oakley. Is that, is that looked at the same way if someone, if you have someone that wants to manufacture alcohol, is that treated the same as the people who want to grow marijuana?
No. The, the, the growing, well, so I'm just speaking to the dispensing of the, of the medical marijuana, of the medicine. That, the dispensaries have a whole list of requirements that they have to meet, that my guesses are different. At least I know they're unique. I don't know if they're similar or where they're similar or different, but they're unique in the sense that that legislation that created the ability for the registration of these dispensaries has in it a whole list of things that a dispensary has to abide by. They have to have an enhanced security system. They have to have a safe. They, they have to have these things that I'm not sure if a distillery would have to have. And I think they may not, because the recognition is that this is still a federally prohibited substance. And so, and a distillery isn't producing, at least if they're producing, you know, something like hard alcohol or that's legal for people, for people who are over 21. So I think, at least what I know is that the regulations around these facilities, these medical marijuana facilities, they're unique. They have to do these certain things.
So presently, you can't, you can grow hemp.
Right.
Right.
So I have one other question. So the type two process has some discretionary things in it?
Yes.
Is one of those discretionary items the effect that it might have on a neighborhood? Is that something that is taken into account by our ordinance, or is that not part of the, of the review requirement?
You know, this isn't, in a commercial zone, this isn't a conditional use permit, which is more, which is more aligned with looking at that.
More aligned with that, right.
This is really more looking at a definition
Yep.
of pharmacy versus medical marijuana facility. That's what staff will be looking at when they make that discretionary decision. There is, there is.
For the public, that, you know, coming in and saying it's going to cause a negative effect on the neighborhood is not necessarily a valid reason for appeal, for instance.
I think it would only be if you're growing at the dispensary.
You can't. So you can't, it, the law prohibits the growing with the dispensary, with the facility. However, it says it can't be on the same address, which is interesting, because you could have two addresses on, you could have a parcel with two addresses. So it might look like you're growing right next to the dispensary, but, but you don't have the same address, so it is allowed. You know, this is, it's really this very interesting evolution of watching, me just watching that, the process of the rulemaking, and how the state kind of looks at it very differently than the government. It's pretty clear. And the, and the law was very prescriptive, and it's just related to the Oregon Health Authority. It really, the only thing that relates to zoning is that where it may be allowed. And when I went up there and talked about the zoning piece, people were just, they didn't, they were, they were like, what? What, this has to be land use? They were stunned. And I, and I said, well, yes, because where these go is land use. So.
The planning commission's position would only be, I think, involved if we did a zone change. And then after the fact, someone would apply for a dispensary in the new zone. Otherwise, as a type two, we wouldn't be.
You're not involved.
We will not even be involved in that.
And I'm just sharing this with you, because I think it's, you know, you have items from the planning department and kind of what is new.
What's new and coming up.
Coming up. And so I just wanted to keep you abreast of that.
I think you're on what, how to work it, how to handle it.
And you may see me on the news, because I've been called by the news to, and I, you know, don't like to surprise anyone, so.
That's good.
So that's, that's kind of, that's kind of what we're dealing with right now. Seems like a little, there's a lot of interest.
Great. Okay.
So I want to let you know.
Thank you very much. All right. I think if we have nothing else, we will adjourn.
Okay.
My commissioners adjourn. Thank you all for coming today.